Everyone, it's now seven o'clock, so I would like to get started. I'd like to call this regular meeting of the City of Albany Planning and Zoning Commission, Wednesday, April ninth, two thousand twenty-five, to order. I will do the land acknowledgement. The City of Albany recognizes that we occupy the land originally protected by the Confederated Villages of LeSean. We acknowledge the genocide that took place on these lands and must make strides to repay the moral debt that is owed to this indigenous people, specifically the Aloneye tribe. We thank them for their contributions, which have transformed our community and will continue to bring forth growth and unity. The City of Albany commits to sustaining ongoing relationships with the tribe and together build a better future for all that now make this their home. With that, we can do roll call.
Commissioner Moeman.
Here.
Commissioner Pearson.
Here.
Commissioner Pilch.
Present.
Commissioner Wadi.
Here.
And Chair McLeod.
Here. We'll move on to item three, ex parte communications. Has anyone had any ex parte seeing no, seeing none? And I have not either. We will move on to item four, the consent calendar, and I understand from staff that we will pull item four dash two, ten seventeen Ramona Avenue, from consent. And also, item four dash three, two commissioners are recused for seven twenty-three Evelyn, myself and Commissioner Wadi. So maybe we'll just do this one by one. Why don't we proceed with approval of item four dash one, minutes of February twelfth?
Make a motion to approve item four dash one.
Second.
All right, vote. Commissioner Wadi.
Aye.
Commissioner Pilch.
Yes.
Commissioner Pearson.
Yes.
Commissioner Moeman.
I'll recuse since I was not present in the meeting.
Okay, and I will vote yes as well, so that item carries. Item four dash three, we can continue, we can, we can vote on it. I think Commissioner Wadi and I don't need to leave the room if it's approved on consent.
Correct.
So we could leave that, I could hand this over to Commissioner Moeman, Vice Chair to.
Yeah, any, do we need to discuss this, or just?
If it's on consent calendar, it could just have a motion to approve amongst.
You can ask if there's anyone from the public or commissioners who want to pull it.
Are there any members of public who wants to comment on the project, present here as, as online?
Yeah, so if anyone wishes to pull four twenty-three Evelyn, which is item four three from the consent calendar, if you have opposition and/or concerns or question, please either use the raise the hand icon or come up to the podium. No.
So with that, do we have a motion?
I will move item four dash three, planning application, PA twenty-five dash oh oh five, seven twenty-three Evelyn.
No, second it.
Okay, so, item four dash three, planning application, PA twenty-five zero zero five, seven twenty-three Evelyn is approved.
You should take the, you need to.
Sorry, I forgot about who is recusing.
Wadi and I can't vote.
So, Commissioner Pilch?
Yes.
Yes.
And I, Odiesto?
Okay, thank you. Just noted that item passes, and there is a fourteen day appeal period for that as well.
Correct. And if you do have story polls up, if you can leave them up during the appeal period, that'd be great.
Okay, let's move on to item four dash two, planning application, PA twenty-four dash forty-seven, ten seventeen Ramona Avenue, and staff, will you have a presentation, please?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, I'm Leslie Mendez, Planning Manager, and tonight, this project is design review, planning application twenty-four dash zero four seven, excuse me, for ten seventeen Ramona Avenue. The four thousand two hundred and seventy-six square foot lot is located on the east side of Ramona Avenue, between Marin Avenue to the north and Santa Fe Avenue to the south. The lot is developed with an approximately nineteen hundred and forty-five square foot, three bedroom, two bathroom home, constructed in the Mission Reservoir style in nineteen twenty-eight. The home is primarily a single story with an approximately three hundred and sixty square foot second story over the attached garage located on the south side of the property towards the rear. All four setbacks of the existing home are non-conforming. The proposed project would include the construction of a new two hundred and sixty-three square foot attached garage and laundry room in front of the existing garage. The conversion of the existing garage along with a forty-eight square foot addition would be a new family room, and a construction of a two hundred and five square foot addition at the second level over the new garage for an expanded bedroom office. The proposed addition would meet all development standards of the district and would match the existing color, materials, and style of the existing home, and would result in a two thousand one hundred and twenty square foot, three bedroom, three bathroom home. The project does not propose to increase the eighteen and a half foot height of the existing residence, it would match it. Since publishing of the agenda packet, we did hear from two of the neighbors. The neighbors to the south, I do believe you received correspondence from them directly, but they expressed concern regarding impacts of airflow and natural light. And while staff does agree that there will be additional massing adjacent to their home and the bedroom window that they express concern is circled, I believe, well, I circled what I believe is their bedroom that they had concern about. So there will be additional massing there, that's where the addition will be located, and any addition will have impacts to neighbors, that's just the nature of a project. However, as previously mentioned, the project meets all developments, standards of the district, it is conforming with the five foot setback, so it is set five feet from the property line, and the neighbor's home is set further back, and as well as mentioned, the height would be eighteen and a half feet, where the height of the district is twenty-eight feet and up to thirty-five feet upon approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission. So because staff believes that the, not only is the addition reasonable and meets all development standards of the district, staff doesn't see any modification that really could be made that could assist with the concerns of the neighbor. Therefore, staff does not recommend any modifications to the project to address the neighbor's concern. Also, we heard the neighbors to the south spoke to us in person, and they had a separate concern, which was related to, there is a gate on the north side of the property, on the, on the subject property, and you can see it on the landscaping plan, it put the gate in kind of a red line across, and there are paver paths. However, once you get beyond the gate into the front yard, access on the subject property is blocked by pretty significant landscaping, so the only way to get in and out of that gate into the neighbors, or into the subject property's side yard is through the neighbor to the north's property. So, since this is a, an exceptional design review, and for those who do not know, exceptional design review applies to all projects that have an FAR of over point four five, this is a proposed FAR of point five-two, landscaping plans are part of the design review. Staff does recommend that the Planning and Zoning Commission approve the proposed project, subject to the attached findings and conditions with the following modifications. One is that the condition be added that the, the plan set include a continuation of a walkway on the north side, on the subject property, so access to that side property area can be accessed on the subject property and not through the neighbors. I have already discussed this with the applicant team, and they are amenable to it. And then the other one, just because I was revising conditions anyway, would be to, when it gets submitted for building, that the north be, the planned north be better aligned with the true north, and that the cardinal, all references to cardinal direction should be revised accordingly. Because right now, on the plan set, the north is always up, but the true north, as you could see, is really towards the left, and it had created quite amount of confusion for this, the project planner, so we'd like to alleviate that, as well as for posteriority. So with that, as mentioned, staff does recommend approval of the project with these revisions, and I am here to answer any questions that you might have. I will also note that the, the project, property owner is here if you have any questions for her as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that presentation. Does anyone, any commissioners have any questions for staff? Commissioner Pilch?
So, was it, did you ever discuss the, the addition having a pitched roof instead of a flat roof with the applicants?
I did not, I didn't think it was, well, first of all, necessary, and I'm not sure when they, the neighbors first, they were, mentioned sky, and I don't know how, if you have the maximum height, it's the maximum height, whether it's pitched roof or flat. Also, since the addition is on an extension of a flat roof, I think architecturally, it makes, and structurally, it makes more sound sense to continue that, that flat roof style.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? No? Any public comment? We move to public.
Do you want to invite the owner or applicant to speak at all, or?
I don't have questions for the owner or applicant, unless anyone else has questions.
I do.
Okay, there we go. Okay, can we hear from the owner? Applicant, please.
Do you have questions?
Yeah.
Yeah, would you mind coming to the podium, in the middle?
Here.
Hi.
Hi, thanks for entertaining questions. I had the same question that I had for staff, is, did you, I don't agree with the staff report that the, the addition matches the style because it has a flat roof. I understand that it's much easier to put a flat roof on the addition because right behind it is also a flat roof, but that the, that entire side of the house would look better with a pitched roof to match the, all the pitched roofs in the rest of the structure. So I wonder if you ever considered doing a pitched roof?
Well, I mean, I'm not the architect, but, but the rest of the structure doesn't have a pitched roof, and the, the other side of the house is also a flat roof. The new garage that's going to be in front does have a pitched roof, and there's one, like, eve coming off of the front of the building, but I, I hadn't considered, we were just going with the, the idea of extending the house in the same style as it's built presently.
Okay, thank you, so the, the, so the, the, okay, maybe I misunderstood then, so the, the, the current right-hand side of the house, before, before you make any additions, that is an original part of the house, or was that also an addition?
So, it's, the, the, the current second level was not original to the house.
Okay.
But it has been there since we've moved in, I don't know when the addition was built, but it's an additional bedroom on top of the garage.
Okay, got you. All right, those are my only questions, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, why don't we move on to public comment? Is there anyone in the room who'd like to comment on this project? Yeah, please come to the podium.
Hi, I live behind this, at ten twenty-two Santa Fe. My name's Dennis Myers. The problem I have is, on the back square part of the building, they're planning to put a, what, four by eight picture window into my backyard, and it seems excessive, since there's no view, the house right behind it is taller than that, so they will only be looking at their yard and my yard. Not really concerned about looking into my yard, but I'm concerned about noise, you know, because it's pretty high, and it's two operable windows, and it's big. So, I don't, you know, it seems close, it's like ten, ten feet from my property line, and maybe another ten feet to my bedroom window. Their houses are close at that, that end of the block. Seems like they could come up with a smaller window, maybe at the side, it's the farthest, again, away from the property line, as opposed to, sorry, as close to the corner.
We just, if you finish your public comment, we take all public comment, and we respond afterwards.
Okay, I got you. Yeah, we'll respond, we'll, yeah, hear all public comment, and then we'll close public comment, and then we discuss things, yeah, yeah, so just state your piece, and then.
A long time ago I came, and they had questions for people in the public, you know, that's why it's.
Okay, all right, okay, thank you for your comment. Is there anyone else here or online that would like to comment? Nope. No, okay, then we will close public comment and move on to commissioner discussion. Does anyone have any comments amongst commissioners?
Well, I guess, I can start off.
Okay, go ahead.
I'll just, I'll make the comment that I'd rather the addition have a pitched roof. Even if just the addition had the pitched roof, the appearance from the street would be much better than it is now, and you could leave the flat roof on the existing, what appears to be an addition. So unless we specify a pitched roof, I'm going to vote no on this project.
Could I ask staff to put the elevation page, architecture elevation page on the screen, please?
Sure. Of which, which one?
I guess the front elevation, kind of what we're looking at in terms of roofs and roof pitch.
So this is the proposed front elevation, and, oops, there is the existing front elevation.
Yeah, thanks. Anyone else? Is that it? Anything else to say, or? No?
Otherwise, I have no issue with the project, it's only the roof.
Okay, Commissioner Wadi?
Sure, I'll just, on that same thread, I actually feel completely opposite of that critique, I actually think for buildings of this architectural style, it's very common for there to be sort of a differentiated setback, flat roof portion, that's sort of subordinate to the primary facade. And, you know, I think it's also important that additions are of their time and don't necessarily mimic sort of like a faux historic look. Also, the, the flat part is going to be, it's not dimensioned, but it looks like it's probably at least twenty-plus feet setback from the primary facade of the building. So I also think that, that, those are on very different planes, and it's, it's set back, and I, I just don't think it's going to be quite as jarring as maybe what it feels like in sort of two-dimensional plan view here, particularly as it steps down to that, to that lower portion with the garage door. So I don't have an issue at all for the extension of the flat roof, I think it actually makes, makes a lot of sense. It's also, anyhow, I, I don't see an overall issue with this, I would, I would have been fine approving this on the consent calendar. I, I think as it relates to the windows, I do think there, I, I hear your concerns around sort of noise and that sort of thing, but I also don't think it's terribly uncommon for windows to be in that sort of proximity, building to building in Albany, where we have these really small lots. Certainly, I think it's worthwhile chatting with your neighbors to see if that can, you know, if they're open to instead installing, you know, transom windows or something along those lines, or, but I, I don't see that it sort of rises to the level of mandating as a condition of approval any changes to the project that otherwise, I think, comply with our design guidelines and wouldn't have any other concerns. Those are my comments.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
I guess I'll just say that I, I, I agree with Commissioner Wadi, with Commissioner Wadi's comments, and the other thing that I appreciate about this project is how you, how, how the architect has filled in the space in front of the house instead of adding massing to the top. You know, in, in the city where it's pretty dense, it's nice to see that infill type development, and so I understand the concerns of the neighbor, I have the same issue at my house, where I'm eight feet from my, you know, from, from my neighbor, and we have windows, we look into each other's houses, but that's just what happens in the City of Albany. Thank you.
Commissioner Moeman, any comments?
I agree with Commissioner Pilch's observation, I think the existing portion, even though it has flat roof, it was much setback, and the new addition has been like, you know, put forward, and so it is much closer to the front elevation of the house, which has a very distinct character. And I think it would not take a lot of efforts to give some articulation to the new modification. The portion above the garage, you know, is completely like formed differently than the, the room behind, and so, can you put the elevation forward, please? The proposed elevation, yeah, and so the portion that has that large window is actually projected from the rest of the large mass on the backside, and so having some character with some pitched roof above that portion would be an easy modification, that, that could, you know, give it some, you know, cohesive look to the, it doesn't have to be like distinctly, you know, identified as a separate addition. So, yeah, I, I would recommend doing that modification.
So you were, you're saying that you would prefer to see a pitched roof?
Yeah, pitched roof with similar articulation that the main house has.
Okay, anything else, or?
And just one question to the staff, we have this large window, which, you know, one of the neighbors mentioned is close to the property wall, does that work with fire code in terms of size and percentage of wall opening, since, you know, it is close to the property line?
Yeah, it's, this corner, if I point, does the mouse move? Yes. So this corner of the property is the shortest setback to the rear property line, which is a little over eight feet, going to about twelve feet at this end of the addition, so it is, completely meets fire code, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thanks. Well, I look at it, and I mean, I would have appreciated maybe a perspective view from the street, from the architect, would have helped us kind of see how this box would have moved forward. I'm actually fine with a flat roof, I don't really see it as changing the project or the house that much. It's set back quite a bit from the street already, similar to the, the large addition that's staying, that's non-conforming, and moving it forward a little bit, and that's kind of, you know, background, the garage is mid-ground, you know, sidewalk and yard is foreground, so it's still background to me, and I just don't see it being something out of place architecturally. I think it's going to kind of just recede into the background, and look just fine. And, and flat roofs are fine, I think, kind of keeping that part of the house is one thing, because it is an extension of that upper part there, I mean, that's sort of architecturally, one unity, one, one thing, you know, so to speak. You know, it's not a different piece from that back bedroom part, so for me, keeping that consistent makes sense. And I would also, you know, appreciate that it is conforming to the setback, so, you know, we're not going to punish people for conforming to setbacks in terms of privacy for the neighbors, a lot of houses are a lot closer than these two would be with that addition, so, you know, it's just common in Albany, like Commissioner Pearson says, and similarly with the back window. I, I don't think there's any, really any issue with privacy or sound from that new addition window in the back, I think it happens all over, all over the place, and it's just going to be fine. So I support the project as is, and I support the condition with the access on the side of the gate. I, I don't quite understand what the obstruction is, but I'm happy if, if there can be a solution that provides access without going around onto your neighbor's yard, this applicant is nodding her head, so I would include that, I don't think that's a problem. So if we have a motion, we could vote.
I'm happy to make a motion to approve the project as proposed with the additional conditions recommended by staff.
Second, anyone?
Second, no.
Okay, let's vote. Commissioner Moeman?
I'll vote no.
Commissioner Pearson?
Vote yes.
Commissioner Pilch?
No.
Commissioner Wadi?
Aye.
I vote yes as well, so that motion passes three to two, your project is approved. There is a fourteen day appeal period, so if there are any story polls, please leave them up. Okay, thank you. We will now move on to public comment, item five. If there is anyone here or online who wishes to address the commission on an item that is not on the agenda, please note that each speaker is limited to three minutes. The brown that each speaker is limited to three minutes, the Brown Act limits the commission's ability to take and/or discuss items that are not on the agenda, therefore such items are normally referred to staff or comment or to a future agenda. So is there anyone who would like to make a public comment? I don't see anyone in the room, is there anyone online? No, okay, we'll close public comment and move on to item six dash one, planning application, PA 24 dash 011, 509 Ramona Avenue, and staff will have a presentation for us.
Good evening, commissioners and members of the public, and the applicants are here as well, my name is Mira Hong, Associate Planner with the city. Tonight, I'm here to present design review application, PA 25005, 509 Ramona Avenue. So to begin with, a little bit of context and just some visuals in terms of the project location, so you can see on the right-hand side, at the up, upper corner, there's, there's the street view of the home, and then the home from the rear, from Google Earth, thanks to that wonderful tool, and the Carmel Avenue label is somehow at a weird angle, but that's not Carmel Avenue, Carmel Avenue is actually parallel to Ramona Avenue and it's at the rear. And then on the left-hand side, you can see from our zoning map, that's the location of the, sorry, it's 509, the, this one, I don't know if you can see my, my cursor, but it's the one where the arrow is on, so it's on the east side of Ramona. It's, so the lot, the subject lot is 3,600 square foot lot property, which is located, as I said, on the east side of Ramona Avenue, between Ward Avenue to the north and Thousand Oaks Boulevard to the south. The lot is developed with an approximately 1329 square foot, three-bedroom, two-bath, two-story home with a basement and a detached garage that was constructed in the minimal traditional style in 1928. All right, so moving on to the project proposal and the site plan, basically when you see here in the dotted line in orange, the proposed project includes a 30 square foot upper-story addition at the rear of the home that would expand the existing master bathroom to accommodate a new bathtub. Underneath, there's also a three, 30, sorry, square foot addition at the lower level, which would be used as a storage or greenhouse space. The two-story addition is designed to be aligned with the north-left wall of the house and project out about three feet and 10 inches off the rear facade. The scope of work also includes relocating the stairs and railings at the rear deck to allow space to construct the addition, and the project does not propose increasing its existing height. Also likewise, the landscape plans propose to retain the existing plantings. So here are, here's the project and the proposed elevation, so you can see it from both sides, the longer elevations are the sides, south-right elevation and north-left elevation, and then the one on the upper right side is the rear elevation. The front elevation is not, there's no changes proposed on that. And the project proposes to match the existing materials with composition, shingle roofing, and painted stucco. So zooming in a little bit and kind of like analyzing a little bit the details of the windows proposed, plans feature new fiberglass windows on all three sides of the addition, upper and lower, including two large picture windows at the rear and single-hung windows on the sides of upper, both upper and lower levels. So as currently designed, the addition to accommodate the bathtub includes a large, so as the plans show, they measure six by four, four feet and four inches, picture window facing the rear yard, that's shown on the lower-left side, that's a picture window from the inside of the bathroom, that you can see sitting, there would be a user in the bathtub, and also the windows on the sides, they would be kind of like long, single-hung windows, one facing north and one facing the south side yard. The windows are proposed to be installed approximately two feet above finished floor, which would allow open and surround views for someone bathing in the tub and stand, in standing to get in, into and out of it, or even sitting for someone tall. So based on an anthropometric survey that was done in 2014 by North Carolina State University, so the hip height for males ranges between 2.7 to 3.2 feet, and for females is between 2.5 to 3 feet. So I actually measured, I'm a very short woman, and I measured where my hip is, and it's way more than two feet, thankfully, I, I was a little surprised, but yes, it's more than two feet. So basically, our, our position as staff is that these windows, you know, are too open, they do not provide privacy for both current and potentially future residents of the house or even surrounding neighborhoods, I mean neighbors. So we will move on to some pictures that, inspiration photos that were provided by the applicant, so, you know, you can see here that while, you know, we certainly, certainly appreciate the aesthetic value and, you know, how, you know, the, these configurations kind of provide a lot of light and views to these examples, we believe that that's in part because of the, the views that themselves and because the location, configuration, distance, and even height, it provides us kind of like a secluded space that would ensure that privacy is provided. So in addition, oh, I don't know what happened with that title, but basically these, the photos at the bottom, these are photos provided by the applicant, and so you can see there, that's the house, the, the orange kind of dotted line is where the addition would go, and those are the views that would, right now existing views from that spot, however, of course, with the windows on the sides, you know, views would be, like, that, that area would be also exposed from the sides. Basically because of the size, position, and height of the windows, anyone, as we said, using the tub would be clearly visible from buildings and even the yards in the adjacent properties at the rear, and sides, and even from the rear yard of the project side, so let's say there's a barbecue, I don't know, I mean, we're not considering only current conditions but future conditions, because as you know, you know, there are changes, Albany and the Bay Area is growing at a super fast pace, and second-story additions and even new homes, larger, larger construction happens all the time, also considering that the adjacent lots to the north and south sides, which are the sides, right, seem to be similarly narrow compared to the project side, which has 36 feet in, in width, staff is not supporting, supportive of the windows as proposed. We would, we are supportive of the project as a whole, but with the condition that the windows are modified at the building permit stage. So yes, as we said, staff recommends that the planning and zoning commission review and approve the proposed project, subject to the findings and standard conditions of approval with the addition of the following condition of approval, that the building permit plans are revised to show that the windows surrounding the tub are, one, minimum of four feet from the finished floor, two, translucent up to six feet from the finished floor, and by translucent, I mean a certain opaqueness to the material, so that, of course, privacy is ensured, and that are non-operable. Manufacturer specifications of windows are subject to review and approval by the Community Development Director. And staff hasn't received any correspondence in terms of this project, and with this, I end my presentation, we're available for any questions or comments on this project. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you for your presentation. Questions for staff from commissioners, any? I guess I have a question. Is there anything in the building code that says the windows have to be opaque or non-clear?
I don't believe so.
No, so we're talking kind of about a common sense thing here, yeah, okay, I mean, I just want to kind of clarify that. Why don't we hear from the applicants, either the owner or architect or both, and if you would mind giving us your take, what you're trying to achieve here, what you're looking to do, why, why so much open glass around your tub, et cetera?
Hi, I'm John Cooley, I'm the owner and applicant, also the architect. We started this project back in, actually in December, and have been going round and around with the, with the planning people about how we want to proceed and what the appearance would be and such. Our main issue in doing this was to actually have, in essence, an enclosed bay window type situation where we could put the tub, be able to have a nice relaxed evening if we wanted to enjoy a tub, look out at the view. In, in the planning, what she didn't mention is we actually have provided curtains in front of the window with a, we'll either have curtains that come from the bottom up, we can raise it lower for some privacy, we also have a plant shelf between the window and the tub, we were proposing to put some plants along the windows as well to help with the screening. My, I wanted to do a little demonstration if you have a moment here.
You're short, I'm shorter.
Okay. Okay.
Anyone who speaks needs to speak into a microphone. Please speak into the microphone.
One of you could speak in the microphone, the other one could demonstrate, I suppose, is how we could do it, but.
So just so you know, in relation, four feet is here. If she's trying to sit in the tub, there's absolutely no way to look out the windows, and you're up against a window, and if you have the screening that she's talking about, you literally cannot see anything, and it's not her idea to put an addition on the back of the house with a tub and then not be able to look out the view, I don't understand the point of that. We were providing additional screening by the, the shading and that kind of thing to help with the view. The photographs I gave you that she showed earlier were taken from the current window in the bathroom, and it shows how far away the neighbors are, most of the neighbors are either have shades already in their windows, or they're screened by trees or other landscaping, so, and there's only maybe five windows altogether that are even close. The neighbors on either side, which she's worried about the side view, the neighbor to the right is so far back, they can't see it, and we've already talked to them, they don't have an issue with it. A neighbor on the left side of us is also far back and can't see anything either, so I'm not sure what the privacy issue is here, but by providing the, the drapes and things for the windows, we're trying to mitigate that issue. I do have some other questions about.
I think we can, yeah, we can continue on for a few more minutes.
The other thing is the window faces our Japanese garden that's in the backyard, so by not having windows, we don't get to enjoy the view, so that's, you know, everything was predicated on being able to see out the bathtub, that's the only reason we have it there, okay?
Can I also address some of the proposed conditions of approval as well?
Yeah, go ahead, I mean, I, yeah, please.
Well, I'm a little concerned because the conditions of approval that I was sent were from an application number which is not, or not the application number that was shown on your screen, and also lists Gary Samonski as the architect, not me, so I'm not sure if these conditions apply to my project or somebody else's project.
I don't know about that.
Which I find a little confusing.
Staff, can you clarify, you are the architect, is the applicant?
Yes.
And Gary Samonski, do you have anything to do with it?
He's on a different project, and the application number that's listed here is for his project and not mine. On the conditions of approval, so I'm a little confused as to if these are actually our conditions or not, and if they are, I don't agree with several of them, so.
Okay, well, I don't have that in front of me. Staff, address that, please.
Yes, so I apologize for the typo, it was a typo, the name of the architect was a typo there, but the conditions of approval do, do apply, do stand.
Even though your application number is different as well? You have applicant, you have a zero level.
Thank you for bringing this to our attention, if this moves forward in approval, then we will revise, before we issue the notice of action, we will revise this to correct, it seems like this was a copy and paste and not all the information was transferred, so that will be corrected, so we're very thankful that you brought it to our attention.
Okay, so the other conditions I'm concerned with is, I don't see the need to do a soils investigation on a property with, has about 15 square feet of foundation level.
Can I recommend that we not discuss our standard conditions of approval? We have standard conditions of approval that apply to all projects, and it's very important that we have them for purposes of CEQA. So we, we, at times for certain situations do modify, they don't apply to every project, but we don't remove them from our standard conditions of approval.
I would agree with that, there's a long list of conditions of approval that not all apply, it's a generic list, and not all apply to every project, and as the project goes into the building permit phase, then you will be notified as to which ones apply.
Okay.
So soils reports, it's irrelevant, we don't have anything to do with that here anyway, so this is design review, so.
But when I apply for a permit, I'm, I'm required to put all the conditions of approval on the drawings?
Not all apply, I think, is what I'm saying.
Okay.
I mean, that's, that's the general list, correct, that, right, and like some, I, I think there are thresholds for soils reports, et cetera.
Okay, so when we get to apply for the building permit, then we can discuss the conditions with the building official.
Yeah, with the building department, right.
Building department.
Yeah, so unless there's something specific, I thought you were talking about the conditions of approval for the windows themselves, I, I mean, if it's the generic conditions, I don't think we should be discussing that.
Okay.
If there's any, like, specific to the requirements.
Right, well, so, you know, so if we just limit it to just the window, then yes, we would like to keep the sill at a lower level, we can provide drapes, as I said, or some kind of screening, so that when, if, if somebody's getting in the tub, we can have that closed, and when we're in the tub, we can open it and enjoy the view, and then close it back up.
Okay, understood.
Having the sill at that level is important, otherwise it's kind of a mute point of being able to sit there and look out at, at a view.
Okay, okay, I think we have an understanding.
Sorry?
Okay, can we, have any questions, does anyone have any questions for the applicant? Nope.
What is the nature of the shading you mentioned?
You know, shades.
Yes.
And those shades are like pulled down or pulled up?
It'll pull up.
Pulled up, okay.
Yeah, similar, we have it on our bay window in the front of the house, we have one we pull up and, when we need to, and then we drop it back down. The other minor issues related to the windows is you asked for the windows to be non-operable. We do need ventilation in the bathroom, and we would like to have at least one operable window.
Okay.
We currently have.
The two side windows are operable?
Two side windows are proposed to be operable.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, got it. Okay, well, let's move on to public comment on this project, if anyone has any public comment, either here or online. I don't see anyone in the room, is there anyone online who would like to comment? All right, we'll close public comment and move on to commissioner discussion of the project, okay, does anyone want to start? Commissioner Wadi?
Thank you, thanks for the presentation, everyone. I'll just, starters, I was actually really perplexed why this was even on the regular calendar, I thought this was appropriate, a very appropriate consent calendar item. I personally actually have no concerns whatsoever with the project as proposed, the large picture window, the size of the addition, the operability of the side. window, the size of the addition, the operability of the side windows. I also kind of have just a general philosophical problem with us critiquing the architectural design of a building predicated on how somebody is going to use the space on the inside. We don't regulate, you know, people could walk around their entire home naked if they wanted to. We don't regulate that. And, you know, I, I do want to sort of defer to the general reasonableness of the occupants of a home that I think, you know, it is the Bay Area, maybe not everyone, but I think most people want as much privacy themselves as neighbors want to receive. And so I don't have a whole lot of doubt that you too want some level of privacy when you're in your bathtub. I think we're all sort of adults here and live in a dense environment and typically navigate that balance between enjoying our own personal lives inside of our homes and glazing and figuring out how to use curtains and living our lives accordingly. So I generally have some concerns about us trying to regulate that. I mean, I think about if somebody came in for an interior alteration and they moved the location of a toilet or a bathtub or a shower, and they weren't doing an addition, would we critique their window? I don't know, maybe we do, maybe we don't, but I don't feel like we should. I think this is a perfectly fine addition, and I'm fine to let people have a little bit of a personal autonomy of how they use the inside of their homes accordingly. I don't think architecturally, there's any problem with having big picture windows on the back of a home. So to me, I'm looking at this exclusively of the architectural balance of large picture windows at the back of the home relative to the rest of the architecture. I appreciate the roof form here, and I would have no problem and would, you know, defer to others to say their piece, but I would be also happy to make a motion to just approve as proposed.
Other comments?
Sure.
I'll go ahead. I can support Commissioner Wadi's comments and a previous comment where she said that she recommended previous applicants talk to their neighbors. It sounds like these applicants have already talked to the neighbors, so that's great as well. Yeah, and, and my input would just be that usually when we're, when we're considering privacy in applications, it's that a new view is being opened on to a neighbor, but here, you're potentially, potentially opening a view from your neighbors onto yourselves, and who cares? So that's, that's your issue, that's your problem. So I'll, I'll, I'll leave it at that. I agree that I don't think we need the, the new conditions of approval for the window. Thank you.
Any comments? Either, no? Well, I would just add, in my own practice, I've designed and built windows exactly like that. Usually in the hills, the bay view, and people want to sit in their tub and look at the bay. They want to sit and look at their Japanese garden, I don't really see any qualitative difference. And generally, the privacy is solved by having curtains. So the projects I've done, either they put up low curtains, or they've had slats that they can shut. So I think I would just leave it at that. I've designed and built very similar things, so, yeah, it's nice to have an open bathroom and look out, and, you know, I mean, if, it is true that your neighbors could be standing in their yards and seeing you getting in and out of your tub, but, you know, I have a feeling that kind of situation regulates itself. People actually don't want to look, and, and you don't really want to be seen either. So I imagine it'll be somewhat discreet getting in and out, so, or use your blinds and plants. And there are enough trees and partial screenings that hopefully it's not a problem for anyone. So I can support the project as designed, so.
Well, I'm happy to move this along and make a motion to approve item six dash one as proposed.
Have a second?
Second.
Okay, votes. Commissioner Wadi?
Hi.
Commissioner Pilch?
Yes.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Moeman?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. That passes five zero with your design as proposed. Okay, thank you. And there is a fourteen day appeal period. There are story polls, I don't know if there are, leave them up, please. Okay.
Story polls are already out, we should provide a photograph.
Okay. Okay, thank you. All right, moving on to, where are we? Presentations.
No presentations.
Item eight, announcements.
Yes. So one, you saw before you, a copy of the city council's strategic plan at the request of the chair, and a great request of the chair, actually, so thank you. The city council on March seventeenth did adopt their new strategic plan for the next two years, so it has similar goals for the, I should say, the same topics regarding greenhouse gases, climate change, housing availability and quality, promoting streets that support safe transportation and mobility options, encouraging community connectivity through diversity, equity, and inclusion, and increasing revenue and economic development to sustain city services, and increasing public health safety and resilience. So the one that will be most relevant to this commission is the one regarding housing. And as the chair, as, excuse me, as the chair noted, unlike previous, there was some discussion of the Solano Avenue specific plan, it didn't make it as a specific objective, but there are some things on the Solano specific plan in the housing element, and you'll see, number one, is housing element implementation, as well as exploring funding opportunities to develop affordable housing and developing the ballot measure to update the city council's authority to consider changes to single-family zoning standards. And I'm going to misremember what measure that is, if that's measured.
Measure D, I think.
Measure D, okay, thank you. So hopefully that will go through and we can delve in, so. I don't know if you have any questions on it, but it, it did go forward on March seventeenth, so if you'd like to see the discussion, I did see the video there, so.
Yeah, council had a discussion on, well, they had a special session on February twenty-fifth, and I could not find minutes or a video of that. I was really kind of puzzled because I wanted to hear what council had to say about these items, and I.
Okay. I will, I'll follow up with the city clerk to see, because I also saw there was no video from, for February twenty-fifth, so I'll follow up and share with you.
Helpful for me, anyway, to understand what council is talking about in these, for these items, so thank you. So it's not a discussion item, but I was wondering if we should have an agenda item in the near future on the housing element and what we need to do and, you know, what the options are for Solano Avenue, that sort of thing. The proof of the pudding is how many housing project applications are we getting for Solano Avenue?
We're not getting any for anywhere besides ADUs and single families.
Sort of an uncertain time.
But we will, we will.
Yes.
Things are going to change.
Okay, well, anyway.
It would be good to be prepared.
We're thinking long-term, you know, I would appreciate a discussion of the Solano Avenue corridor and other areas in general with, in terms of the housing element and what we need to do over the next year to get that finished.
Finished?
Finished. Well, I mean, we have certain obligations imposed on us from the state that we have to meet, and there is a deadline for those, isn't there?
Yeah. I can go over, we, like every jurisdiction, we did our APR, annual progress report for the housing element that was submitted April first, so I can bring that next month to you all.
I would appreciate reviewing it.
That'd be great.
Yeah, kind of discussing where we're going forward. Okay, so any other announcements?
Yes, and you may all know already, but I will announce that I think, well, I know, but you may know. Director Depp Bond has announced his retirement, so we're all very sad about that. But you're welcome to say your goodbye anytime, but next meeting, which is April twenty-third, I'll be out of town, so he will be here directly, so you can.
Nice.
If not other times, you can see him directly.
Okay, all right. Yeah, we appreciate his service, and I appreciate working with him, you know, for all these years, too, so. Any other announcements?
Did the staff have any more announcements?
No, staff has no more announcements.
Okay. It seemed like you're using this time to propose future agenda items, so I would propose a discussion about not allowing vinyl windows in, in, not allowing vinyl windows, period, in our, in our building code.
We had something like that, kind of, objective standards, something. I think the window ordinance is a little bit ambiguous.
So we don't really have a window ordinance. We did last, not last December twenty-four, but twenty-three, we had an item that we went in depth on vinyl windows, and at that time, there was a revised council policy. So is your intent to revisit it again, or, because I don't think we'll be changing the building code on that.
Sorry, you said there was a revised policy?
It was, we had certain conditions of approval of prohibiting vinyl windows that was revised based on direction of the, the commission back in December of 2023. So our current condition is that we prohibit, this is for new development or development projects, that we prohibit vinyl windows only when it is exceptional design review over forty, point four-five FAR, or when the window is clearly visible from the public right-of-way, either a front-facing or clearly visible side window. So at this moment, in our standard conditions, if it is less, less than forty, forty-five FAR, point four-five FAR, we just prohibit vinyl on front-facing windows or those visible from the right-of-way, and if it is exceptional design review, we prohibit them outright.
Okay, thank you. I didn't recall that, and, but this is only for new construction?
Correct.
Ah, okay, so I guess I was thinking about renovations as well, so, because I've seen renovations around town where vinyl windows are being used, and so that, that concerned me. Did we, were we the ones who brought that to council? Did we discuss it first, or was that brought directly to council?
It was a commission policy, so it didn't go to council. It was, it was an applicant objecting to the no vinyl condition that was placed on their project. So we, we elevated what would have been an administrative design review to, to the commission for your feedback. Maybe you were, you may have been absent.
No, I, no, I do remember that. So you're saying that, that, so that policy already existed, but I do remember the discussion we had for this one applicant, and the discussion was that, the discussion was that it would, it would have been a financial burden not to use vinyl windows, and we allowed it in that case. But I guess I'm, so, you know, we can, we can certainly allow exceptions in the future as well, but I guess I'm, I'm, I'm really souring on the idea of allowing vinyl windows at all in any, in any project, so.
Well, I think it would be worth discussing as an agenda item.
So we.
When I look at the ordinances, I don't find anything specific. I don't see it in the ordinances.
We don't have it codified.
Maybe we could, or, it would make it less ambiguous, it would also could apply to renovations.
So what we could do is either just bring, and I'd like your feedback and not too much discussion, but we can either just bring back a point-specific vinyl windows and/or we can bring back kind of objective design standards for homes. So if windows are the only concern, we can just do windows again, and, not to get too into the weeds right now, but very honestly, we would probably pass an ordinance regarding objective standards, but have the actual standards be adopted by resolution so that we're not codifying things that may change with technology or, yes. So if that is something that the commission is interested in.
I think we are going to work on objective design standards at some point for all projects. That's a fairly large.
It's, yes.
Yeah.
That hadn't been on the top of, of the pile.
Yeah. Well, we're supposed to, for San Pablo Avenue, have objective design standards, which we do in our specific plan.
Correct.
But that doesn't apply to the whole city.
Correct.
So we're sort of in this, here, here you do it, there you don't have to, or.
And also like, you know, it applies only when the house has FAR larger than point two, point four-five.
Yeah.
It is less than that, then, you know, they can use vinyl windows. But then I wanted to ask you, what is your concern? Is it environmental issue or the aesthetic?
Yes, both.
Okay, because aesthetically, it is, you know, not good, and most of them are like, you know, install flush.
Yeah.
Doesn't, you know, create any shadows or anything, shadow lines, and it looks, you know, very boxy. But like, when they replace, I replaced my windows recently, I use fiber, but then when you have old house with, you know, wood frame, they just literally insert those windows in the wood frame, keeping the same shadow lines and everything. But if they are like installed new, then they are flush.
Mm-hmm.
And if they want to reset them, they have to like do extra framing and all that, achieve that effect, but environmental concern is totally different. But in that regard also, when we were discussing the last project, we were talking about what other, you know, what are the other material we use in building construction that are, you know, vinyl, and there are a lot.
There are thousands.
We have flooring, you know, whole floor could be vinyl. We have outdoor decks, like, you know, hundreds of square feet decks, that are solid vinyl. And so if you compare the quantity of actual vinyl with them, the quantity of window frames would be like.
I just, I just want to pause here, just because we can't get into a discussion about this due to the Brown Act, so the issue is just a future agenda item, so it sounds like staff is suggesting that either we, we can elevate objective design standards, or we can elevate just the window thing.
I'm going to recommend that a future, and this is a very doable future agenda item, is to put this on the agenda item to kind of discuss in a public forum that we can.
That sounds good.
Further define what, what we want.
All right, perfect. Okay, and with that, our next meeting is Wednesday, April twenty-third, and I will call this meeting adjourned. Second meeting in April.